Everybody, I have your attention. Thank you. We do have a quorum. I'll call this meeting to order. First order of business, is there any minister in the House or person that would like to say an invocation? I don't see anyone. Will you please join us for a moment of silence? Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
This is the special City Council meeting of September 4th at 5:30 to talk about city budget. First, I guess it's over to you, Mr. City Manager, at this point.
Yes, sir. I'll introduce, and then the City Attorney will read the ordinance, the proposed ordinances. Two public hearings are required by state law to adopt a millage rate and a budget by taxing authorities leveling, levying a millage rate. The first public hearing, tentative hearing, is advertised on a notice of proposed property taxes, the trim notices, that are mailed out by the property appraisal. The final public hearing will be advertised within 15 days of adoption, adopting the tentative budget. The final hearing must be held within five days, but no less than two days after the advertisement appears in the newspaper. During the public hearing, the first substantive issues discussed shall be the millage rate necessary to fund the budget and the specific purposes for which ad valorem tax revenues are being used. The millage rate in the budget must be tentatively adopted and finally adopted as advertised in the hearings by separate votes. The City Council shall hear comments from the public regarding the proposed tax rate. Four ordinances have been introduced for the first reading with respect to be the final adoption of the proposed FYI 2019 budget. One, adopting the millage rate for the operating of the city and the voted debt service millage rate on the Series 2005 general obligation bonds. One, adopting the general fund and the related budgets of the city. One, changing the charges for services of solid waste, utility, enterprise fund. And one, adopting the enterprise fund and capital improvements, programs within the budget, within the city. The tentative operating millage rate is set at 8.0105 mils, which is 10% above revenue neutral rollback rate of 7.2822 mils. The voted debt service levy is .03642 mils, is a reduction of .043 mils and 38.58% below the maximum levy authorized by the Series 2005 general obligation bonds of .5930 mils. City Attorney will read the ordinances and then we'll provide Council a presentation.
Ordinance number 40, 2018, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, providing for the millage for the operation of the City of Titusville and voted debt service levy for fiscal year 2019 and providing for an effective date. Ordinance number 41, 2018, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, adopting the general and related budgets of the City of Titusville for the fiscal year 2019 and providing for an effective date. Ordinance number 42, 2018, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending Section 16116 of the Code of Ordinances by amending and establishing an increase to the residential monthly charge for solid waste and recycling fees and by amending Section 16117 of the Code of Ordinances by amending and establishing an increase to the commercial dumpster and commercial can monthly charges for solid waste and recycling fees and increasing the commercial dumpster rental fees and providing for an effective date. Ordinance number 43, 2018, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, adopting the enterprise fund and capital improvements program budget to the City of Titusville for the fiscal year 2019 and providing for an effective date.
And with that, sir, Tom, if you could bring up the presentation? The FYI 2019 budget was presented to Council on July 10, 2018. The proposed millage rate of 7.7900 mils, the proposed debt, voted debt millage of .3642 mils. The approved tentative millage rate of 8.0105 mils was adopted on July 24, 2018. We conducted our first budget workshop on August 15. This is the first public hearing, and the second hearing, public hearing, will be conducted on 13 September at 5:30. Next slide. The fiscal year 2019 budget was built with a proposed millage rate of 7.790 mils, which is 6.97 above the rollback rate that yields an additional 1.47 million ad valorem revenue. During the public hearings, we'll discuss the percentage increase in the millage over the rollback rate to the general fund and the purposes for which the ad valorem tax money revenues will be increased. We'll hear public comments regarding the increased ad valorem revenues and millage rates. And the fiscal year 2019 approved tentative rate of 8.0105 mils is 10% above the rollback, which yields an additional 394,000 in ad valorem revenue when compared to the proposed, allowing for budgetary flexibility throughout the budget hearing process. Next slide. Of the $1.47 million of the proposed budget, here's how our budget has lined up. Approximately 700,000 or 5.5 miles of roadworks will be used for that $1.47 million, and retiree healthcare costs of 770,000, which is divided up in the implicit and explicit subsidy, as you see listed there. Next slide. The budget process began back in July, or January 2019, with Council adopting the five goals and 12 objectives that this built, this budget is built upon. The budget priorities that we, the staff used to build this budget are listed. A few things that we were not able to accomplish was maintaining staffing levels at our current levels. This budget freezes six positions and eliminates three. Next slide. We continue to focus on near-mid and aging critical capital infrastructure, maintaining the general fund emergencies at 60 days, and enhancing revenues to allow use of miscellaneous reserves restricted to grants funds for general obligations. We're continuing with our citywide culture of continuous improvement. We have 39 projects complete, 24 in the works, and we're provoking a diverse local economy by investing in workforce development and a culture of recreational opportunities. Next slide. This budget contains a 2.5 cost of living adjustment. The current cost of living adjustment across, the CPI in the United States right now is a little less than 2.9. It includes 6.6 miles of road resurfacing through the CRA, CBDG funding, and general fund. It is, increased our city paid and employee paid healthcare by 4%, and it met 1.7 of the required 3.2 contribution to our OPEB trust fund. A couple highlights of our capital projects necessary. We have air packs for the fire and emergency services, out of the enterprise fund mooring and bathroom upgrades at the marina, replacement of heavy vehicles as well as vehicles, daily use vehicles, computer software upgrades, stormwater system renew and replacement, and additional improvements. As you see on this slide, this is a millage rate comparison to our peer and surrounding cities. City Titusville has the third highest millage rate of the area at 8.0105, and of course, that's tentative, the proposed being 7.900, which keeps us still in the third highest range of the surrounding communities. Of our millage, the amount of revenue tax-wise that is generated for ad valorem, the City of Titusville has the third lowest per capita, which you see there compared to Palm Bay and Cocoa Bean, a little lower than our city and up to Cocoa Beach, which is quite substantially higher than per capita for our city. This is our, we call them our house, property tax house. This is where the taxes are actually going off of your tax bill. This particular house is homesteaded property at $136,685 at 7.79 millage rate, and you can see where Brevard County Schools is approximately 35%, 36% of your tax bill. City of Titusville, 36, and 19 to the county, and the various MSTU and recreational activities are listed in small percentages down below. When you compare that to this slide, this is the same house at 136,685, a homesteaded property with a millage of 8.0105, and you'll see a slight increase of about $20 compared to the previous at 7.79. This is our special events grant funding request, set currently at 73,695. Last year, Council approved the budget requests for special events at 45,576. The difference is approximately a $28,000 increase in requests for special events. When we prepared this budget, there was three items that came in lower than what we had anticipated. They were simplified tax, communication tax, half-cent sales tax, and state revenue sharing. We had to make additional adjustments to our budget of $140,000 to balance the budget based on those projections coming in lower than what we anticipated. The budget itself was built with the directors' requests. We weren't able to fund $14.5 million of requests that they have for operating. Of those, $2.25 million are considered critical needs. As you see the other funds, that includes capital and internal service funds as well, $6.5 million. Additional funding considerations, a 2.8 that are considered critical priorities by our directors. You can see there, out of the $394,000, the first three lines equals 347,000, leaving an additional 46,261. So these are what we consider funding necessities. The additional .5 in COLA is to keep pace with the CPI. Out of the 21 police officers, we're short, we're requesting two and a half officers. That's two officers bringing them on in October, and one officer mid-year, which would be the three that we were hopeful this year. Community relations, a closed captioning for video website. As you know, there's several lawsuits in and around our community to bring websites up to ADA standards. And then next to that is the police overtime, to restore some overtime at the request of $60,000. And you can see the remaining list of the top priorities within each department. 2.8 short. And out of the Water Resources Department, we have two proposed changes for the adopted budget. Both are out of the enterprise fund. One is some F.D.O. relocations on 405 and additional scanner at 75. So these equal $257,500. The tentatively adopted millage is eight, as I said before, is 8.0105. The tentatively adopted debt service millage is .3642 to fund the debt payments on our Series 2005 Riverfront Acquisition Bonds. Next slide. City Attorney has read all of these ordinances. If you have any questions about those. This is your recommended actions tonight. You can tentatively adopt the operating millage at 8.0105. You can adjust that as necessary. Tentatively adopt the vote debt service millage of .3642. Tentatively adopt the general fund and related budgets. Tentatively adopt the enterprise and capital improvement budgets. And then we have read the water utility ordinance. Next public hearing and final public hearing for this budget is on 13 September at 5:30 in Council chambers. We have staff available to answer any questions that you may have. Ms. Clements, our Budget Director, has a formula that if you started adjusting the millage, we'll be able to calculate the adjusted change to that as we go to allow Council to see where you're at with the adopted budgets.
I've been advised at this point to let the public speak before we start our deliberations. Anybody from the public that would like to come forth, please do so now?
I have Dwight Severs.
Okay. We have cards?
It's just Dwight for his.
Just Dwight.
I tried to play the system. Sorry about that. For the record, my name is Dwight Severs, a resident of the City of Titusville, living on Riverside Drive. I received your notice of proposed tax increase, and my taxes for the City of Titusville, City of Titusville alone, will increase by approximately $250. That's approximately a 7% increase over last year, and last year it increased by about 7% for me. I'm quite concerned about if the new, the constitutional amendment passes, what my taxes might be the following year after that occurs, and it will have a very large impact upon some of us, let's put it that way. This tax increase is in addition to your 3% water and sewer increase, is already built in, and for stormwater and solid waste, a 3 and a 2 half, 2 and 1/2% increase. And obviously, if a couple of those water and sewer and solid waste rates are increased, the general fund is the beneficiary of the subsidy from that fund over, so you'll get more money that way. As I read the City Manager's message and the budget message on page five, and certainly pretty well consistent with what you put up there on the board, the increase is primarily due to rising healthcare, fleet operation costs, and additional outstanding liabilities in the pension and OPEB trust. Frankly, I don't mind paying some additional taxes, as long as they benefit the citizens of Titusville and the benefits they receive. I'm here primarily on the ad valorem tax issue because of the 3-2 vote that occurred whenever you removed the $500 cap on pre-65 retirees' health insurance. As a taxpayer, my taxes are being increased, as well as many other taxpayers. And those taxpayers, when you did that, had no notice whatsoever what you were doing. There wasn't an advertised public hearing giving notice to the taxpayers that you were doing this to them. You gave notice to the retirees, and I understand that, but the taxpayers didn't get the notice. In addition, I've observed that, according to the Gatsby, and I have the Collins Report, which I'm sure all of you are familiar with, April 2016, I think you probably all received that earlier, but there was, in the OPEB liability, was $46.1 million. That's an April 2016 report. Your latest report reflects, based upon what you did, as well as the implementing the Gatsby 75, that it's over $60 million. In this report, you were rated as a D. I'm sure you're rated as an F today.
Would you like additional time, sir?
I would. I mean, you have four ordinances up for consideration.
How much time would you like?
I probably need at least another seven, eight minutes, because I have three items I want to cover.
Well, let's go for eight, just in case. As you're the only speaker, I feel we can do that.
Oh, okay.
Do I have a motion?
Yeah.
I have a motion, and second, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
You're on.
And it's interesting to note, and I would have shown up at the public hearing you had with retirees, but frankly, I've been threatened a little in the past by speaking up about that issue. So I chose to come to this meeting when you're increasing my taxes because of that. In addition, I would like to suggest that you're the only city in Brevard County that's doing this. I mean, Palm Bay, they don't have any retiree health insurance, period, none. And people are retiring in their 40s, 50s, et cetera, getting second jobs on occasion, some earning as much as six digits, and you want to increase the taxpayers' taxes to provide free insurance. Is that right? I retired, finally, at age 69, because I believe I have a responsibility to myself and my family, and to my community as well. That's the way my mother taught me. So I respectfully object to my taxes being increased for that purpose, which the City Manager indicates that's one of the reasons why you're raising taxes, as well as to fund the OPEB liability. The second concern I have concerning the budget is in public works. Public works, with all due respect to public works, they have been underfunded for years. In the good old days, whenever budgets were really tight, the first area that cut was public works, and I saw them over time being reduced, reduced, reduced. The median and the maintenance of the rights-of-way and et cetera in the city in the 80s and 90s versus today, and I realize you contracted that out, is vastly different. And I think there should be adequate funding for public works. As you know, I'm quite familiar with the splash pad and appreciate what all is being done for the splash pad. But you've already had to replace all of the landscaping there, frankly, because it wasn't really maintained to begin with, and plus, we did have a hurricane, it does have an impact as well. But if you're going to have nice parks and recreation areas, and you want to attract people, you need to have facilities that can be properly maintained as such. And so I would put in a plug for public works, adding the adequate number of personnel to take care of the needs of the city and its facilities, because I think that has been lacking for years. The third area I'd just like to briefly touch upon, and I appreciate Mr. Broome and Mr. Sean Stoffler clarifying some of that. It has to do with my concern about the Indian River Lagoon and our sewer facilities right next to the Indian River Lagoon. And I have some photographs I want to pass out to you. And this primarily relates to the Bayview lift station and the force main that goes from Bayview to the Gray Street lift station. I really didn't realize how bad Bayview was, I could sort of tell, but I took a couple of pictures there, and it hasn't fallen into the Indian River, but there's certainly significant concerns, and as Mr. Stoffler indicated, on page 26 of your budget, there is some funding to address Bayview Lift Station. Please make sure that's done sooner than later. And I say that partly because the Gray Street Lift Station, I observed over the years, 2004, 2005, 2006, that lift station overflowing repeatedly sewage in the Indian River. I didn't run to the newspapers at the time. I did talk with Renetta Curry-Grant and the City Manager, Tom Harmer, and complained to them, and frankly, I couldn't even get them to paint the crazy thing. I had to end up painting the lift station myself, along with my good neighbor, Mr. Norris. We painted it. But it took them five years to rehab that lift station, and I observed repeated overflows, and what occurred simply was that whenever there was a heavy rain, the new lift station at the Titusville High School that had been installed years earlier, it was oversized, and whenever both of them were pumping, the Titusville Lift Station would overpower the Gray Street Lift Station, so it couldn't pump any of the sewage out. Obviously, a little flaw in the engineering design, that's been corrected today. But my concern, in addition to the lift station itself, is the force main on the east side of Riverside Drive. During Irma, it was exposed, and water and boards, et cetera, were pounding against that wrought iron force main. My neighbors and I saw it. It took about a month to get one or two feet of dirt covering that with some kookina rocks. Frankly, that is a Band-Aid approach, because during Irma, we lost five to 10 feet of shoreline, and the size of those stones and rocks will not hold against another storm. They simply will not. And hopefully, the force main will withstand another storm, but like I said, and I'm sure Mr. Stoffler knows, and your Public Works Director knows, it got exposed, and we need to make sure that the facility- And we need to make sure that the facilities dealing with the sewer system are adequately protected and hardened for storms, because we don't need another spill in the river. I've lived there, at that address, since 2003, and the decline of the Indian River is so substantial, so great, that it's very saddening. And yet, it's hurting, the decline is hurting, and I'm not totally blaming the City of Titusville. It's hurting the property values. It's hurting the City of Titusville and the citizens of Titusville to have such a decline. And I say this partly about the maintenance of facilities, whether it's Public Works or water and sewer. I was in the fortunate position, I guess you could say, as Mr. Broome, receiving a letter from the United States Attorney saying, "City of Titusville, you owe us $24 million because you violated the Clean Water Act." Needless to say, that was kind of shocking to receive that type of correspondence. When I reviewed it...
Would you like additional?
I want to wrap it up.
Okay.
When I reviewed it, it wasn't because there wasn't adequate money in the budget to make improvements, they just hadn't done it. And you've got to maintain these facilities for the health and welfare and for the best interest of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Just on that last piece, I remember that time. I was not on council, as you know, at that point, but I remember it vividly. But it did have a good outcome, I would say.
Yes, it did.
And that's how we got the plant that we have now.
And we were, we were required to fund $500,000 per year for renewal and replacement of facilities. I don't know what we're providing today, but that's not a bad idea because we're still having a lot of leaky pipes into the sewer system, and they can tell you their numbers go way up whenever it's been raining a lot at the plant. They go way up.
Just to finish what I was saying, we also had, that plant was double capacity that we needed at that time, at least my understanding of it, so that even today, we have additional excess that when someone new comes on, there's no, we don't have to build additional plant.
Yes, sir.
So that was, that was a good, a good outcome on an unfortunate situation, certainly. The only other piece that I can explain was the meeting that night that the $500 was lifted, was supposed to be an advisability, and to the surprise of several of us, council opted to make a decision that night. So that's why some of that advertising was not sent out, because there was not supposed, there was not scheduled to be a meeting that night that, that took action. So that's just another thing. Is there anything that Mr. Seabirds asked, Bridgette, that you might want to address? No?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are there any other speakers that, let's see, another gentleman just came in. At this point, it's up to us to discuss it, and I think Mr. Seabirds gave us a lot to think about, so who would like to start off?
With the additional $1.47 million, there was a mention of 5.5 miles of road. Is that in addition to the six miles that we try to do yearly, or is that?
That's the general fund portion.
Okay. So if I'm hearing that correctly, then the Public Works Department, I guess, was built, they capped out with no roads in there?
No, ma'am. We have 6.6 miles of roads budgeted.
Okay.
And out of that, 5.5 million is budgeted through general fund, another half mile through CBDG and CRA.
Okay. I guess I'm wondering where that, the additional revenue dollars are going. I see that half of it's going to healthcare, but what the additional half appears to be going into roads that we already do yearly. Does that make sense?
I can answer that. In prior fiscal years, we have funded the road resurfacing program through closed projects, carryforward dollars and grants. Last year, we funded a small fraction of it from general fund, but this is the first year we've had to fund the entire program from general fund in a very, very long time.
So we don't have those grants or programs?
Exactly. I think what happened was because times were kind of lean and we had big grant dollars to fund these things, we kind of got out of the habit of funding this recurring expense with recurring revenues. Because we were trying to balance the budget, and this year, in order to do roads, this was the only choice we had.
Okay. And then, could somebody just kind of briefly go over the positions that we're eliminating or freezing, what they are exactly?
So the three frozen positions are all tied to the Fire Department Safer Grant that, I think you all were involved with that later, I mean, earlier in the fiscal year. Those were originally budgeted in the FY 18 budget. The grant matched to those nine positions. And so when the grant got reduced, those positions had to get reduced correspondingly. And then the other unfunded positions are a service worker, a chief mechanic, and a survey aide too, as well as a development services inspector and a development site inspector for community development. The first three were from Public Works, and then the second, the last two are from the Community Development Department. When you look on page 55 of your budget book, you will see those positions listed on the FTE chart as unfunded. And the reason we do that is because we know we need those positions, and if we were ever to get lucky enough to have funding for them during the year, the position would be authorized.
Okay. And then, is the budget built, the mileage rate at the 8.01, is that including 73,000 for special events?
Okay. The budget is built on the 7.79 mileage.
Okay.
You all approved the 8.105 number to give you a little flexibility if you wanted to add things in the budgeting process. So the 7.79 mileage rate does include the 70, the special events.
Okay. All right. I think that was my last question. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Nelson.
I need some explanation.
Okay.
That third slide, you're talking about 7.79 mils is 6.97 over rollback, which is, gives you 147 million, or 1.47 million, correct?
Yes.
And then, they, okay.
And so that was the extra revenue we need. Instead of going to rollback, we needed this extra revenue in order to fund the budget, the basic things, plus a little, well, most of the basic things that we had in the 18 budget. So the budget that was proposed is above rollback, and it's $1.47 million of additional monies that we needed over 18 to fund these costs.
Okay. And, but we have 394 of this.
Wiggle room.
Wiggle room.
Right. Because the state allows us to go up to 10% above rollback. So that's the difference between proposed and the 10%.
Okay. And right now, we're funding, how much in roads?
We're funding 6.6 miles, but five and a half miles is funded through general fund.
Okay. Plus, we're doing the Hopkins Street project, which is another three miles, correct?
I don't know how many miles that is, but it is additional mileage.
More or less.
Is it?
Yep. It's about three miles.
Okay.
And that, again, that's a grant that's not out of your general fund.
Correct. But if we were to, if our goal is to do six miles of road per year, and I understand that's the, the goal, correct? Okay. Then if we went down to five and a half miles of road, we could use that extra half mile of road, so to speak, for a capital project. And I think we were talking about maybe looking at school zones, safety zones, or sidewalk infill projects. And I forgot how much they were. I think one was at 50,000.
Give me just a second, I can tell you.
I think the school safety zone was like 50,000, and infill...
The sidewalk infill was 100,000, and the sidewalk repair was 100,000, and the school zone improvement was 50. So I don't remember exactly which sidewalk we were talking about. I think it was the repair. I think, wasn't that it?
I think so. So that was just sort of a thought of maybe, I think we're doing a total of 6.6 miles of road, and then we're doing three miles on the Hopkins Street project. So if we reduced it out of the general budget, half a mile, you could turn around and do...
Remember, the Hopkins is, is a grant.
Correct. Correct. But we're also doing five miles, six miles out of the general fund in addition to the Hopkins, in addition to the CBDG.
Okay. I'm going to let you finish your points.
Does that make sense? Am I making sense?
You are making sense. I'm not sure I agree with it all, but it's...
Can I caution you on one thing?
Okay.
I think it makes sense what you're saying, however, if we start doing that again, we're going to start funding the roads more and more through grants, and we'll be in the situation we've been getting ourselves, we need ourselves out of, which is funding the roads through, yeah, yeah, through, you know, through recurring dollars. And it's taken us about two budgets to get to the point that we are now. So when you start funding a chunk of that through grants, then in a year or two, when we're hit with other economic uncertainties, you may have to make other additional cuts because our ability to generate revenue will not be there like it is right now. So that's just a caution as you think about the strategy. We're, we're funding roads, recurring revenue sources, but they may not be that, be there in future years if you do this.
Understanding that, I think I have one other question.
Could I give a comment on this? Although it wouldn't fund the entire amount that we're looking for, I think an area where we could reduce some, some funding is special events grants.
Oh, yeah.
And that money would be freed up for things like this. I don't think it covers the full amount that you're looking for, but it would reduce...
Well, I was sort of in favor of funding the Christmas parade, the Martin Luther King parade, the red, white, and boom, and the Friday Night Live, to a certain extent, and cutting the others. I don't know how everybody else feels about it.
I'll wait to hear from everybody else on, on that one. Member Diesel.
They've confused me. This is normally over there. Anyway, it's, I'm on that page right now, looking at the same thing when you said that, so that meant a lot to me. Off the top of my head, I would say Christmas parade, Martin Luther King Day Parade, red, white, and boom. And I would be, I mean, I, I would make some people happy, I get it. I'm willing to listen, but I'm willing to stop right there. And we, I think our, my first session with this, we did some serious cutting in the events. I felt that we were being leaned on heavily. And again, we tried to benefit all citizens, and I think all of these are beneficial to the citizens, some citizens, some more than other. I certainly think the Christmas parade, having walked in it many years, it seems like everybody is there. Certainly, the red, white, and boom is huge, and the MLK parade is huge. So those being said, those are three that I, I could say, good to go, and I would be willing to certainly listen to more.
Just to comment on yours, I would agree with those deletions. Anyone else? Anybody else like to?
I agree with both of you guys on that as well. So I think we're, for the most part, in agreement on the special events.
I'm sorry. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, sir. And so, two comments, one to Member Nelson's point, and then one coming back. So at a minimum, I think that we've consistently tried to get six miles a year, and that was through lean times, good times. And then, we had one year where it was well above and beyond, but the rationale for that, and Mayor, if you want to clean me up on this, was that the ability, the cost of the materials we were able to get warranted, bumping up the, the number of miles we did, that would be a consideration that I would take into maintaining the amount of miles being proposed. And the reason I say that is if a road is going to last X amount of years, which is a long time, that if we're able to get some now with materials cheaper, we get more miles today than we would tomorrow. And so I, I would maybe ask staff to tell me if I'm right, wrong, or indifferent in that logic. But that's why I, I wouldn't adjust the proposed miles. I've never had a citizen say, "Man, you guys shouldn't have paved the street," in all our time, so I'd share that with you, you know, it's... And I've had a pothole, and I had a pothole in my neighborhood, and so I had a good, I think I had a good idea about how long that process takes, and it was just long enough to make me go, "Man, well, you know, we, we got to get on that." But it was just short enough, and it was done in such a good way that it made me have confidence of the job that we're doing. So I think we, I think we're in a sweet spot as far as, you know, what we're able to do. And so I would, that would be my, I guess, question to staff and, and opinion set forth. As far as special event funding, I would kill the Friday Night Live to a zero, and here's why. Last year, we adopted, we approved the idea of making sure that we had resource officers in our schools, and I think that that was, to Chief's credit, he and his team, that they were ahead of the game on that, and they just shouldered that, and, you know, didn't bat an eye, it seemed like, and just pulled it off. And that burden and stress, although it has been done magnificently, I have a feeling that there was probably more pressures than we felt back in return. Being said of that, I think that the expectation of officers being involved in schools is not going away anytime soon. And so if we need two additional officers this year to help alleviate some of those pressures we asked for the previous year, I want to make sure that those are funded positions. And of all the places, if I have to make a choice of downtown street party, or officer on the street, or in our elementary school, at this year, I am definitely of, we asked for that, and I think responsibly, that would be the, the right move. The other, the other events, I think, are just American culture to the core. It's like apple pie, and so that's why I would, I would feel supportive of that. Although I commend the downtown merchants, they've been doing it a long time, my hope would be, after as many years as we've been engaged in that, that by this time, if that event is something that they are committed to, that they would be able to pull that off as, as an entity on their own. So that's my thought on that.
Member Nelson.
I think I didn't get canceled, but while I'm here.
Right here.
While I'm here. If we could get an idea from Mr. Cook back there about the price on paving a road, is it going up? Is it going down? If we don't do it this year, is it going to cost us more next year?
Crystal ball time.
Yeah. Get the crystal ball out.
That's a easy crystal ball, because construction will not get cheaper. Heavy economies, big commercials, they're all competing for the same people, they're all competing for the same dollar. Asphalt is, is dependent on oil, so as oil escalates, asphalt prices go up, workforce is busy, contractors busy, all the overhead goes up, and they will find higher increases for smaller projects. So when they get a $10 million DOT job, our million dollar project starts to escalate because they're giving up something. So, yes, it will get more expensive. Also, remember with road repaving, when we don't get to it, it will turn to road reconstruction, which would be 10 times the cost. So it's like changing oil in your car. If you defer it long enough, it will break. So we do a lot of heavy patching, and we try to keep the network together, but six miles is enough to get us through. It's not enough to keep improving the system. We're still paving streets that haven't been touched since the 60s. So, yes, it will both get more expensive from how we do it and in general bidding.
Okay. That answers that question.
At this point, I'm not sure, this being a special meeting, do, I, I think I hear consensus on the, on the... on the Christmas parade, MLK parade and red, white and boom parade. Do we vote on that now or go on?
Well, sir, I'll just give you some numbers for those three events. From the 73,000, 635, those three events cost $14,942. That leaves you a delta in special events of $58,693.
Sorry? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so the air show, there's a substantial budget request increase for that and they do a great job. And I know that we, last year, I think, was the first year, the year before that was maybe the first year. And Mayor, I think you made a good point the previous year is that, you know, they really went and asked if they didn't need it. And so I was just wondering, is there, can you give us some insight about why the request is so substantially larger?
I can, yes.
Okay. Yeah, great.
I'm on the tourist development council.
Okay, please.
Exposed to that information. They're having a real problem. The Melbourne air show is in direct competition and maybe by coincidence, and maybe not, it seems to always occur on the dates that Tyco has previously announced. So that's a larger population down there that would come up here and has for a long time. Now there's a new show down there at the same time and they don't have to travel as far. So it would seem that's the big change that is causing the reduction up here.
Thank you.
Sure. I don't see, I don't see a different conclusion. One thing I would say that they are, they are really hurting. I know I've had, City Manager and I have had meetings with them and it's genuine and it's not them just trying to get, they're trying to stay, keep going. It's a very worthy show if you've been to it. I think they have to figure out a way to do it in a different time or timeframe from that show and I think they're working on that. So I would, I'm comfortable with the three. That one was, is kind of hard to not support at this time because they're so close.
Mayor, if I could, if I could add to that?
Yes, sure.
When, the meeting we had with Tyco, one of the other challenges they have is corporate sponsorship where Melbourne has access to a larger corporate aviation background, aviation businesses. We don't have those deeper pockets that Melbourne has. So that's one of their challenges as well.
Okay. Again, how do we handle this motion? Is it, we vote on it or we?
You can adjust the tentative budget in your discussions and if you do, then you would need to recompute the millage rate to determine what percentage over the rollback rate the adjusted budget would be, have that discussion. However, you're not, you must adopt your tentative millage before you adopt your tentative budget. So you can have discussions on amending the budget and what that millage rate would be, but you're not adopting the budget yet.
I'm suggesting finding out what is available that council would like to change and then let staff present that. We'll do it the way it's prescribed here and then change it at the final meeting.
Sure, remember, right. And remember, whatever you adopt is your tentative millage, you cannot exceed that at your final. Your final millage cannot exceed your tentatively adopted millage.
So what the city attorney is saying is leave your tentative at 8.1 or 0105.
Right.
To, up to your final meeting and then adopt that.
Well, we would.
Yes, sir.
Presumably do that in any case, so I don't have a problem with that.
So if I could help, what I heard was three of the special events to be funded and that equals 14,900 and leaves 58,000 to help with the additional fund requests. Perhaps you'd like to address what we have on the additional funding request and then add that 58 or not into those requests.
Okay. Are you going, you're looking?
Trying to figure out which slide it is.
Ma'am, it's slide 18 in your packet.
Ben, are you working on it?
I'm sorry?
Well, are you working on that also?
Well, what I did was I just took the fifth, I've subtracted the 58,963 and I was waiting to see if you all wanted to add anything to that. And then if you don't, I can tell you what the millage rate would be right now. It would reduce it because you took out 58,000 from the budget, but I didn't know if you prefer to address that with the changes or do you want the number now for what the reduction would be?
We can do it either way, really. I see, I see other.
Well, if you, if you kept the budget as is without any changes except for reducing the special events, the 58,000, your new millage rate would be 7.7512, wait, 7572. 7.7572 would be your new millage rate and it would be 6.52% over rollback. So that's keeping the budget the same and just taking out the $58,000 of special events.
I present several questions, I guess, and I'll get to them. But what I'm suggesting, and again, I'd like to note that is we leave everything the same and make the adjustments at the next meeting.
Yes.
Is that a problem, Mr. City Attorney?
Well, you can have that discussion now. You can leave the tentative where it is now and adopt a different one at the final hearing.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so that all the numbers can be properly worked over.
That's fine.
I believe what we did for y'all last year was we had a, we had follow up for a very specific stuff, like if you've decided you definitely want to reduce these special events and we'll adjust the slides at the next hearing with any of these different scenarios you want so we can walk into the meeting having everything, you know, verified and making sure that everything is exactly right.
Yes.
So I would recommend keeping it the same until the final meeting, just in case something happens.
Exactly. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. The only number that I would like, so we've got a reduction of the special events. Have you added everything above the line, above the red line? And then where does that put us?
That's 347,739 are the three events, which from the 394 at your tentative yields an additional $46,261.
Let me rephrase that. The millage, we pulled the event, we pulled the X amount from the events, now I want additional general funding considerations, everything that's above the line, top three. So drop from here, we have the whole enchilada of everything that's above the line. What's that put our final millage?
The revised millage rate would be?
The revised millage rate would be 7.9513 and that would be 9.19% over rollback.
And that takes us, just making sure that's the pay increase to officers in the closed caption?
Yes.
And the reduction?
And the reduction, yes.
Okay.
Member Stokel. Okay. Member Nelson.
That was fine, too.
This is getting easy. Member Diesel?
By default, I get to talk.
All right.
I was just wondering, we, if we take $58,000 off of special events, I know that the last budget, we actually carved out, I believe, 30,000 for youth engagement. So we actually shifted that. I'm not saying to do that now, I'm saying that that was precedent and moving that. As I look at the additional general funding considerations, I note that the community relations closed captioning on our video would be $60,000. Would that be possible to move that 58 over to take care of that line item?
I think that's kind of what we just did.
Okay.
We just kind of netted these three increases against that reduction, so we did.
So if we do that, then it doesn't affect the millage because it's still in the bucket.
If you just did those two things, it would vary minimally, I mean, just by $2,000.
Yeah, okay.
It would kind of be a wash, just for those two items, though.
Anything else, Member Diesel?
No, thank you.
Member Stokel?
I think this is my last question. If, if we pass the maximum allowable millage rate and did what Vice Mayor said, cut the special events, added those three, how much additional money would we have to quote unquote play with or see if we want to raise it to that and fund something versus keeping the millage rate at the 7.95?
$104,954.
Okay. Mr. Seaver's brought up many things. I don't, I don't think we can properly discuss them tonight without some, some of them at least, without research. So I would, if council agrees, like staff to look over what he has discussed and, and come back to us at the next budget meeting with what items are recommended and clarify some of those items as to what can be done, what was done or what can be or will be done. Does everybody agree with that? Any problems with not discussing it, any, that particular part, except for two items that I want to bring up. And I think they're the elephants in the room that we, sooner or later, my feelings and has been, that we made some, had some votes that were prematurely made. And I think that's what the majority of our budget problems are at this point and they aren't going to get any better unless we do something about it. And that's the retiree healthcare, which Mr. Seaver has brought up, and the OPEB. I'd like to hear some discussion on that if we can. Member Diesel was first.
I'm probably going to ask for a refreshing of my mind, memory on this one, but I, matter of fact, I felt like maybe I was the one that was stating it on that night of the OPEB. Was there not some discussion about having it, I don't want to use the word readdress because that'll get us in big trouble, but I simply want to say, relook at, resee how it went in that year. For example, how many OPEB members are still on that tier? And I'm not looking, you know, it sounds very dark as far as people passing on, et cetera, but the fact of the matter is that changes with how many people are still involved in that tier. I digress. My thought was that we had said something about, let's look at that for a year and see and have some facts and stats come back our way after that year. And again, it's hard not to use that word readdress, but certainly refocus, rehear the numbers, the stats and the facts and go from there. But I could be wrong, but I thought we said, look at it in a year and see what it's doing.
I can't conclusively say that it was on that, but yet that discussion along with healthcare, retiree healthcare, removing that $500 limit, there was discussion. I vividly remember there was discussion about relooking at it. And I think we need to, personally, I think we need to relook at it as soon as possible because if you looked, we've had the numbers in front of us, I'm sure they can provide them again at the, at the next meeting as to what the future will bring. And I have a great fear, and I have been quoted accurately, interestingly enough, that we're basically going to bankrupt the city. And if not that, at least the people who would like to have their pensions, when it comes time to have them, may not have them by the millions and millions of dollars that we have to put up in front, which we're already behind. How much, sir, City Manager?
The annual contribution requirement is $3.2 million.
And we're?
We were able to fund 1.7 this year.
So we're behind the remainder of that already and it's just starting. So I'm, I'm going to let everybody else speak at this time. Vice Mayor?
Thanks, sir. So I think to what Member Diesel was mentioning, as part of that discussion, and I know it was part of the discussion, so here's kind of what I recollect. One was that we were talking about the liability, so, and what was going to be on the books. And I thought we started at 70-plus million when we initially came out, if it's 70 and some change, I forget what it was, but it was, there's 72, right? So 72 million, that's what, that's the number, so on and so on. And that was what was presented, that's what we heard, that's so on and so on. We made the adjustments and so on and so on. Then, very quickly, the number, like from one meeting to the next, that number, it seemed like dropped multi-million dollars to a different number, which was lower, which I think was just a portion of, and it was with the best accuracy possible, and there was a jump. As part of that, I know my own thought process was to allow the adjustment of the implementation of the new requirements against our current liability, just to get a true solid number as an example that wouldn't jump from one meeting to the next, multi-millions of dollars in one direction or another, with the idea that if it took a year for that, and I don't, I don't fault this, it's not a fault, I think it's just part of the process, that a year or two to get, to allow that to take place, to flush it out, to get to a point to where that number is, that as a council member, that's what I felt that I would be comfortable with for a review and return, to figure out, okay, now we know where we're at. That was one piece. The second portion, which was independent of that, but affects the OPEB and our liability, was our decision to then contribute to the OPEB fund. So, and please help me up, the pension and the liability for OPEB and retiree benefits, so on and so on, the whole enchilada, was based off of a system that you get this and in addition to getting this, the city or somebody will contribute money to the OPEB to help reduce the liability over long term. And after the two, you clean me up, please. Sorry. So, and I apologize. After the two years initially of saying, we will kick in money, that we no longer funded it for the next n- years. And because of not funding it, the money that would help reduce what we owe as a city to a benefit, never had a chance, in my opinion, to be funded appropriately. So this was kind of our reintroduction of committing to the arc. Sure, yeah. Help me out.
I don't remember it that way. Bridget?
Well, the first point you raised was regarding the periodic evaluation of the OPEB trust. The OPEB trust board has authorized another evaluation. Now, it won't be available in time for this next budget hearing, however, in the, I believe in the February timeframe, we will have a full report available to council and that will take into account all the changes over the last year. So that is in the works and it'll be done by our actuarial firm. The second point, you, I believe you were alluding to the fact that there, is there a retiree contribution to the OPEB trust fund? There is not.
No. Thank you. That wasn't where I was going.
Now, the reduction from the 75 to the 62 was?
Was based, based on actuarial evaluation and there were some assumptions that had changed and we presented that to council. That's the reason there was a reduction in that, that number from 75 to the 60.
That's the comment I was going to make. If you all recall in January, when this issue first came up, we had to wait for a revised actuarial study, but we also told you all at that time that we were going to revise some of the assumptions because we realized they could be tweaked in a way to be in alignment a little bit better with how the plans are now being implemented. And so between January, when you all made that decision, and into February, when we got the actual valuation, which included the lifting of the cap, these new. got the actual valuation, which included the lifting of the cap, these new assumptions, and the implementation of the new GASP, that resulted in that reduction. But we did talk about that. It was just at the point in time that the numbers were being given to you all in January, there was no way for them to be able to update everything to be able to give you the full impact with these assumption changes that we were going to make to help strengthen the plan. So it wasn't a fleshing out, if you will, it was just, these are the assumption changes and the liability that we got served in February, that is the liability, that's what it is. And then with regard?
Bridget, if you could describe some of the assumptions that were changed, maybe that would help the council?
Mortality tables, rate of return, there's a number of?
Well, the biggest one that affected the savings was in the assumptions for the different age groups of the, of the retiree healthcare. Prior to now, we were, the actuary was assuming everybody was under the active healthcare plan for retiree healthcare contributions, but a large chunk of them were under the Medicare plan, and that has a lower premium. And so they made this one little tweak that kind of lined people up with their premiums that they were being charged, and that resulted in a significant savings to the plan. And then I think that there were a few other little assumptions that I think were made, that, you know, some of the age things, but if I recall quickly, that was the largest one, was because so many people are now on the Medicare plan, that it, it really changed, when we changed that one assumption, it gave us a significant savings. So, and, and the second thing I wanted to just add was with regard to the contribution to the OPEB trust fund, the city had attempted to do that years ago when it was created, but during the bad times, we just couldn't afford it. And then after this stuff happened, you know, the, the cap was lifted and our liabilities were increased, we really had no choice but to do it, and you all recognized that whenever you approved the strategic plan for this year. You told us we need to address these long-term liabilities, and the only way we can do that is by reducing the benefit or by contributing to the trust fund. So we were trying a blended approach, and so that's why we're having to contribute.
If, if, if there is, and let me see if, from a benefit, at some point in time, even though as a council, we've said, this is, yes, please contribute, we said we would, that's how it was designed originally, we haven't done it, now we're doing it. And even though that it is woefully less than what are the required amount is, so one point and some change to three point and some change, how long do we have to contribute before it's recognized as being with fidelity?
Fully funded? Well, for example?
Not fully funded, for an actuary to look at it and go, okay, they're actually doing this, and then they could change some kind of prediction about the liability that?
If we contribute to the trust fund in a, in a consistent manner for over a three-to-four year period, the actuary can change the assumption that he uses for the discount rate.
How much money would that take?
I, I can't tell you the amount of money, but I can tell you the impact it would have over, over a three-to-four year period. Right now, they're having to use the, the bond yield, which is like 3%. And so if we can contribute consistently and they see that, you know, we'll be able to double potentially the, the discount rate because we are contributing and our investments are earning more and more and more. And that's why we need to, but I, I'm not going to even attempt to give you a dollar amount because I'm not an actuary. But it, it will make, I think that will make a huge impact, also containing the cost to the trust fund. Those two things will make the biggest impact on this plan and try to do this in a good place.
If they happen.
Mm-hmm.
That, that, that would be just something, I, I would be interested to know, and just from a strategic planning standpoint, how, how many years, I, I hear three or four?
Well, that, that would just, that, that would not be to fully fund the plan, that would be to give us a better discount rate, which would impact it dramatically, but it will take a long time at the rate we're going.
So let me try it like this. So would it be possible to get a 10-year snapshot?
But understand, if you do that, the OPEB trust fund pays for these, all these scenarios, the actuaries aren't free. So the more snapshots you want, the, the more money you're taking from the trust fund for that to happen. And I don't know if that's worth it.
My, my concern is that I'm asking to invest into something that is a long-term strategic problem, and if it is a matter of, what I definitely don't want to do is just, hey, listen, get a study to get a study. I don't want that. But if we are, if we have said, we're going in this direction, then I think it's a fair question to ask, how many years would we need to go in this direction to see X benefit over a certain amount of, of a period of time?
And if you can commit to a, a specific funding level over a certain period of time, I'm sure you can have that. The, the current, I mean, if we went to the actuary now, we, we could probably look at the current evaluation, and it probably alludes to that. I haven't looked at it since we prepared the budget, so.
Sure.
But we are required to have an actuarial valuation from the state of Florida. We do it on a biannual basis, but because we have a trust fund and we are self-insured, it is a requirement, so we have to have these anyway.
And so you're required to do the study and the evaluation, but you're not required to contribute to the OPEB trust. For example, right now, the balance is about 2.5 million, and liability is excess of 60 million, so you'd have to contribute that arc, that $3 million for a large number of years to start really making a dent in that overall liability.
I, I hear that, but what I don't hear, and, and City Manager, and to the council, would be that I hear that, what, what, I'm going to phrase this, what I'm hearing is we don't know. What I'm hearing is we don't know. What I hear, what I hear is that there is a substantial possibility of bankrupt the city, we know that. There is a substantial possibility of this is going to be very expensive. I've heard that there is a net positive, but that net positive is undetermined over a certain amount of time. So what I'm, what I, what I kind of feel like I'm doing right now is taking a shot in the dark and throwing that way, but I'm not quite sure what the end result is going to be.
Sir, and to help you understand this?
Sure.
What the actuary evaluation has come up with is our current position, we're required to have an annual contribution of 3.2 million dollars. So as we go down that road, if we fund at a certain level, we started off at a million this year to try to fund it, and we were able to accomplish 400,000 of it into the trust fund. So what Bridget was saying is if you do multiple years at a consistent rate, let's say a half a billion dollars a year, then you could take a look after four or five years at your 10-year.
Mm-hmm.
But right now, you can't. You've only funded one year of your OPEB liability, and you haven't fully funded that.
Correct.
And if I, I'm, I have to go back and look at this, but, I mean, with the pension funds, those, those liabilities are amortized over a 30-year period. I think the OPEB is probably somewhere close, but I'm not sure the, the exact time period. I'm sure in the actuarial report, it answers all these questions. We can make sure, if you'd like a copy of the latest one, we can make sure we get it done. You probably have it, but we can send it to you again if you'd like it.
If I could, it?
I'm sure it's got a lot of the, the information you're looking for.
It'll, it'll show you where we're at in 10 years, and as you recall, that line went like this.
Correct. And is that based with the ongoing contribution? Well, I guess what I'm saying is maybe not fair, possibly not fair to staff, that we're saying, hey, fund this, make adjustments for this, please do this, and we're not, we're not really leaving a roadmap to do it. So, or maybe there is, and I just don't know what it is.
Well, you, you have your roadmap right now.
For a year?
It's, no, no, it's 3.2 million consistently.
Correct.
And then we'll evaluate it in three to five years, depending on where we're at.
We don't have the three point.
Correct.
Correct. Right. So?
The actuaries' report is our roadmap, and the only thing that we can change that will dramatic, is our contribution in and the discount rate.
Right.
The contribution will yield us a higher discount rate. Those two things together will compound and fund us a lot faster. But to get that information, it's going to cost a lot of money to do it, and I don't know if the OPEB trust fund has that, so.
Yeah, well?
So we can do it as part of the regular valuation, like Tom was saying, that will be done as of September 30th, 2017, and we can ask them to, you know, give us some ideas of some different things, and it may not be as costly, but that's something for the OPEB, you know, trust, the OPEB trust fund board to decide as we go through this next valuation period.
So if there was policy that would, and not policy, but if, if I, barring spending additional funding to go get a, a, the actuary study done, i- if we are saying, if there is, if we're trying to move forward at, we hear, we can't do 3.2, we got it, what does it look like if we do a million? Because in the same sense, if one million over the next four years is an exercise in futility, then it's an exercise in futility, then I, then I can understand that.
But remember, the actuaries' job is to tell us what we should be contributing based on history.
Right.
So if we contribute a million every year, whenever he updates the report because we have to have it done, it's going to reflect those contributions, and then, you know, the arc will adjust accordingly. So he's predicting things based on history, not based on what ifs, because they don't know, because they can't.
Sure. Okay. Mark, thank you.
Just a, a comment. What I'm hearing is that we're dealing with a lot of what ifs. And we're 26, 26 police officers short at this point? City Manager?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one?
Twenty-one, yes, sir.
Twenty-one police officers short now, and that's not going to get better. We're growing, we're going to have more people, more need for services, and if we continue on the road that's proposed even, it's a big what if. So what if it doesn't happen? I don't want to be negative, but I have worked with the economy on the stock market for a number of years, and I can guarantee you, nobody knows completely what's going to happen in the future. We're going through a good period now, but we went through a terrible period for six years, and there's been those cycles for as long as I've been alive anyway, and that's a long time, by the way. I just want to make sure nobody else made that comment. But I, I don't, and, and all the numbers and everything are very good to get, but I have to be conservative, and I think we all have to be conservative, dealing with the city's well-being. So whatever the numbers come to, or however we get them, that's, that's fine with me. But in any case, we've got to look at a different direction because what we're doing now is digging that hole deeper and deeper and deeper. And I can't see, I can't see any good coming out of that. Again, that's giving something away before you have the money to pay for it, and that's just never a good, good idea. Member Stokoe, you're next, please.
Yep. Now, that's kind of just what I was going to touch on. That's what makes me most nervous when looking at this, is seeing we're the third highest millage rate, which, what's the maximum millage rate we can go up to?
Ten.
Yeah, and we're pushing eight now. And again, talking about unknown numbers, when we have no cap on healthcare, that could be a $600 premium, that could be a thousand dollar premium, we don't know. And that makes me very nervous when we're charged to fiscally run the whole city of Titusville, and we have numbers thrown at us that we just don't know, and we're going to go and hope next year, you know, what that premium is, and I don't even know if we can raise the millage rate next year. So if we can't, because of what's happening with the home stay exemption, we're going to probably be looking at next year being really rough potentially and having to cut. And I don't want to get in that position, which I, I'm glad we're talking about this because it, it does really make me nervous, and I hope that we can kind of hopefully address it again and see what can we do long-term, which leads into my question for you, Bridget. Do we know how much for this year because of the increase of no cap? If we would have left it at a 500, how much did we have to account for?
I think those numbers were thrown out last January, but I don't remember what?
Premiums right now, Joe, are 585?
Contribution went to 578.3.
Yep.
For 19.
For 19, from 553.
Yeah, and then previous to that, it was below 500, it was closer to 480 or something like that. So that, that'll give you, it's kind of a hundred dollars in a year.
Like 100,000?
Are you talking about the liability or the actual?
Just the actual cost for our budget.
Oh, the cost, oh.
So like, if we had it at 500 cap, would we potentially have 100,000?
Well, I can tell you in, in FY '18, because after that cap was lifted, we had to do a budget amendment.
Mm-hmm.
For general fund alone, the increase was $50,000. And so I think maybe if you add the enterprise funds, you're probably looking at 70, $75,000 citywide. But $50,000 to the general fund was a big hit.
Mm-hmm.
And that was at the FY '18 premium, which was the 553, right, Joe? So that, you know, that's what that did.
So as far as general fund money to work with, $75,000 increase?
It was about 50 for '18, yes. 75 was citywide, so general fund was 50, and then it would be probably a little bit higher next year just because the increases of the, of a 4% increase in the premium, so.
Okay. And then when we talk about the contribution to OPEB, if we would have left it at a 500 cap, what would have been our minimum contribution? Would it still have been 3.2 million?
Probably not, because we wouldn't have had a cap, but I can't even tell you what it would be.
Okay, so we just don't?
It would have been less.
Okay. So potentially not having to put 1.7 million in there, again?
It wouldn't have been 1.7. We, it would have been less than that. Our arc would have been, well, I don't know, I mean, it would have been less than the 3.2. So, you know, the 1.7 may not have been enough, but it would have been a lot more than 50% of it, I believe.
Okay. So again, additional money that we could have potentially put somewhere else.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay.
Member Nelson?
Bridget, let me ask you, how many years did we not fund the trust fund, the OPEB trust fund?
It was created in 2008.
It was created, I believe, in 2009, and it's actually been two years we've actually made withdrawals. Matter of fact, for 2018, we took out $600,000 to lower the OPEB trust balance to pay retiree healthcare costs to balance the budget. So we've probably, in the, what, nine years from 2009? We probably contributed maybe two or three years, and then we've withdrawn two years, and now in 19, we're hoping to add to that balance. So the net is, it's going to be about $2 million in the balance come the first of October.
So if you look at the swing in general fund from the '18 budget to the proposed '19, you're looking at about a million dollars between when, you know, the dollars, because we took money out last year, and this year, we're putting money in, and so that, just that transaction with the trust fund cost us a million dollars in terms of, you know, real dollars between enterprise funds and general fund.
Okay. My recollection was that we were going to, give it a year, they, you guys were going to do some tweaking to the insurance across the board, which I understand saved 700,000?
There were changes in '18, and then we have some further changes to plan design in '19. But we don't really know what the '18 changes are until kind of we get through the end of the fiscal year and we see the results. But it seems like, it seems to be leveling off substantially with the, with the changes that we've made this fiscal year. So I think that's a good thing. It doesn't mean there's not going to be premium increases because we're self-funded. There will always be premium increases, but we won't be looking at 10 and 15%.
And I think the actuary, when he came over, he was looking at basically the insurance premium sort of leveling out in 2020, 2021, somewhere in that time period.
Possibly, but there's a cost to that too, so I don't, I don't, you know, that, that would be what we charge ourselves, but as healthcare costs rise, our costs are going to rise.
Okay. But I think that was, that was my recollection, is we were waiting to sort of give it a year and then sit down and look at what we were doing. But I think if we're going to discuss it, we need to discuss it and set aside basically a meeting for it, as opposed to try to do it in the middle of a budget meeting. It's just?
Well, it's?
You can't do it.
Part and parcel of?
It's part and parcel.
Of what happens in the budget.
But it's, it's not something that I think that we need to address tonight, because there are people that should be noticed and should be here.
I think we, we've had a, a proper amount of discussion tonight. I would, I would agree with that. Whether or not we need a special meeting, I, I don't know. That, that can be looked at by staff, and depending on what numbers they have and what they put together for the next?
Well, what I'd just like to add is the purpose of this meeting is just to approve the '19 budget. It's not to look at costs in fiscal year 20, 21, 22, 23, even though I realize they're important because I worry about those same things, I, your purpose here in this meeting and the next meeting is to approve the budget, and the budget addresses the liability that we have and the costs that we have today. And I think that that's really the focus, and maybe you might want to consider Member Nelson's suggestion, but I don't believe that outside of this year, it really applies to what we're doing right now.
I'll be right to you in a second. But, and maybe that is the right way. That would be a meeting not based on, not talking about doing a, the future budgets, but rather dealing with what the situation we have now. rather dealing with what the situation we have now on the OPEB and on the retirees' funds and whether, that, whether we can continue that. I don't see how we can, frankly, unless there's some major changes somewhere in the economy. And the way economies go, they go up and down. I don't know how we can count on that at any point. And I'd rather be conservative than assume that some wonderful thing is going to happen during the next 10 years. I can't even tell what's going to happen tomorrow in this situation that we have now. Member Diesel.
As I started this topic with, I recalled some term about looking at this again in a year. And then as we, as I listened, and I hear the term actuary, and then I hear probably, maybe, we don't know. And then this last meeting, we talked about catastrophic claims were down like half from the previous year. Well, that was really good news, you know, but we're not really saying that, and I get it. And, and I can't help to stereotype myself again a little bit more, but the, I'm helping my son at Space Coast now, he's the head football coach. In this last game we played, lightning had hit the scoreboard. So we had no scoreboard, we had no clock. So we didn't really know how much time was left in the game. We kind of knew the score, but nobody else did. The point I'm making, it was very confusing and I didn't really know. And I'm used to knowing if it's first in 10 and first in eight and it's 27 to 26. And we don't seem to have that concreteness. I digress, however, to say, as I said when I started, I would like to hear any hard facts I can in a year, like how many people moved to Medicare in this last year? How many people are no longer with us? God love them. How has it changed in a year? Catastrophic claims are down half. All that being said, I also will say, as I came into this meeting, I felt like this was going to come up. But I also felt like this is an important topic and it's certainly a load to carry, maybe. But that being said, I think this is where we move on and, and we are where we are and we move on. But this are where we are. It's like no scoreboard, the lightning hit it, we don't know.
So to give you a little perspective on that, the actuary's already done his data request for the 9/30 '18 valuation. I'm hoping, I've requested that we have it in the middle of January. I can't hold them to that because it's their busy time of year. So I think that what you may be asking for is that we compare the valuation from last year to the valuation of this year. So you can see what has changed with plan design and GASB and all of these things that have happened. So, and that will not hap, we will not get that report until probably January, February.
There you go.
Just to give you an idea.
And I appreciate that. And I, I think what I'm looking at here is, is an open-mindedness by the council to say, where are we? What's the score? Turn the clock on, let me see how much time's left. So that's where I'm at. Thank you.
Joe.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, sir.
Let me try and clarify a couple of points. Our healthcare plan design, which we look at every year, and this is to, to your point, Councilmember Diesel, is that each year we anticipate what our active claims are going to be and try to address a plan design and the contribution to meet what those expected claims are. That's our, on an annual basis. So we try to anticipate the active plan and the plan design and the contribution to meet what we know in terms of our active members who are on that plan to meet those, those claims costs. The OPEB liability is, is, is a cost, is a liability that extends into the future because we have some future expectations for people who have retired with normal retirement benefits, who are also eligible for their retirement subsidy. And that continues on until, you know, until their death. Because those first two tiers, as you understand, are, you know, are for life, that cap was removed. So there are, there are two elements in, in taking into account our health claim. One is the active members and what we anticipate the costs are going to be on an annual basis, which we look at every year and make, make strategies to contain those costs. And we went from 20% increase the previous year in contributions to 4%. That's less than medical trend. And we did some, some, some plan design changes to meet our claims cost. The OPEB, we asked the actuary to look at, and the, like retirement. The actuary collects all of the salary benefits and all of our census benefit each year to determine then what that OPEB liability is. All the retirees are in that census to determine what expectation the city is required to meet that liability over a long period of time. And that's where we get that annual required, the ARC that we've been talking about. And since '09, as Mr. Robate said, when we started the OPEB trust, we've never been able to reach that ARC. We've never been able to, we had a $45 million liability, but the city has not been able to afford that ARC, that annual contribution. This, for the first year, we've moved off of, you know, making a $600,000, $400,000 contribution. Now over a million towards that ARC, which is over 3 million. So we have not been able to meet that, that ARC obligation. We've been able to fund our healthcare, that active, which we look at on an annual basis. And we're making some roads to, to meet those expectations. Catastrophic events are, are important. You know, we can anticipate, our consultant said, you know, with, with a, with a population our size, we can anticipate four or five catastrophic events a year. So we have to, we have to fund and meet those expectations. So I guess my point, my, my point is, is I just want to clarify, we have an active medical plan that we try to address and strategize to meet each year. But then we have this OPEB trust that goes into time over a long period of time to meet expectations for those, those benefits that we're obligated or expected to pay to our members for their lifetime. And that's where your tiers come into, you know, into play. So I hope that, that clarifies some.
And it does. And we've talked that before. And, and really, all I, again, I'm trying to do is get a clarification and a visual. And I hate to use that scoreboard, but boy, it's nice to know how much time's left or whatever. And when you don't, all you can do is say, I don't know, probably, maybe. And I really want to do better than that. And so, and like, I know we had the numbers of how many people were affected by that tier. It wasn't a ton. And I'm getting an awful lot of emails, sadly, that we're losing some folks along the way. So I'm just curious and I'm not wanting anybody to go anywhere. I'm going to make that clear. Live, live long and prosper. But at the same time, life does happen and we have, I will, I'm sure we decreased from last time. I'm sure some have rolled into Medicare. And all I'm asking now, and without prolonging this discussion, is that we have that opportunity. As I think we said when we first moved this direction, let's review it in a year and be open-minded from there.
So that'll happen probably in February, hopefully, if we get the report in January.
Thank you.
And I assure you that that census is given to the actuary every year. And right now, we're preparing that actuarial study as of 2017. And you'll have that information.
We have two more speakers and then I think we should probably wrap this up, come to some, some conclusion. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, sir. I would just like to reaffirm or affirm member Diesel's kind of approach to this and for a couple of reasons. One is the, I believe, and Mayor to your credit and member Stokel to your credit, I make no bones about it, that this is an issue that has to be addressed with a systemic plan that will have a long-term net effect. So I, I, I'm in total agreement. I, I really believe that that's a five-month, that's five months. But in that five months, at the conclusion of that five months, I think that you would have additional supporting evidence, that's hard numbers all the way around, that as a, as a member, you would have enough total information of all things to compare to changes made to previous years. I think as a council, that you'd have a, a tenured council who I think, through, through the faith of the decisions that you would make, that the, the level of experience that you have would be well worth allowing yourself the time to look at that information. And I think that this council, and I heard the new guy's pretty good, that you would be able to, to make that kind of decision. And it could be a long-term decision that would not necessarily include having to undo, redo, undo, kind of a policy or direction. So that would, and I think tonight, I, I think today is the budget that's presented, what are we looking at, the budget that's presented in the upcoming year? That gives a five-month run to get the rest of the data. And at the conclusion of February, you're into the next budget cycle anyway. So whatever the conclusion would be, then the application of that decision could go into the following year. And, and I think that you would have a solid decision based on this council. That was, man, that would be my recommendation.
Thank you. Member Nelson.
I just have a question for Bridget or Joe. How much did we put out in catastrophic events this year so far?
About $10 million.
$10 million?
But we have reinsurance. We have reinsurance and that covers, our deductible is 135. Everything after 135 per event is covered by reinsurance. So we're insulated from that full impact of that additional money.
So how much did we actually put out?
You mean the net?
The net.
Between the catastrophic and the reinsurance? Between the, the total claims that have been paid and the reinsurance we've received? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I think so.
I don't have that number handy.
We can get that.
We have it, I just haven't looked, I just haven't looked at it in about a month. I look at it monthly, so.
I, I don't believe the insurance, the reinsurance came free, so you would have to.
Reinsurance was $550,000, our premium per year. And if we had five catastrophic and we paid the 135, that would be another 600,000. So it would be 1.1. But those are not, you know, solid, real solid numbers. Those are ballpark numbers.
Yeah.
30% of our total premium, because our, we, our total, about $5 million.
And not, but not retirees. That's a, that's a different actuary. And whenever he does the healthcare, we, he nets those numbers. He nets the claims against the reinsurance. So they take all of that into account. But we can get you that net number, the latest one.
Okay, I'm just curious.
Good curiosity. No, I'm, I'm complimenting you. It's really a compliment.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You've got to know those things.
Mr. City Manager, I would, you, you've heard all of the discussion on, particularly on this matter tonight. I would put it in your very capable hands to, with staff, with the rest of the financial staff, and to look at this situation and tell us when you want to have a special, when it, it's the right time to have a special meeting on this subject, these subjects, I guess, the OPEB and the.
Absolutely, sir, you bet.
All right. So we will go on from this point. Any other, any other discussion? Has anybody got any, any breath left for, for more discussion? So we, we come to the recommended.
Could I, could I get some clarification now from what council wants to do on our current budget?
Yeah.
Okay, so what, what I heard was you want to fund the additional pay 0.5. You want to fund two and a half police officers. You want to fund the closed captioning video. And then your remaining 104, 954, you're going to talk about at your next meeting.
Correct. I, that's what.
And in addition to that, you all made a decision on special events tonight? Am I correct in that?
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to make sure, because what we want to do is.
Yeah, so just for clarification, the three special events that you would like to fund are the Martin Luther King Jr. Parade, the Christmas Parade, and the Fourth of July at $3,000 equalling $14,000.
And I just say, we'd like to fund all of them, but we can't. We can't afford it. The city cannot afford it, unfortunately. Okay. So with that, now are, I think we're ready for recommended, for the recommended actions that are given here? Who would like to make a motion? Is it four separate motions?
Well, no, your first motion will be a motion to adopt the tentative millage rate.
And we're going to leave.
And right now, your tentative is at 8.0105 mils.
Right. Page four of your budget, I believe, sets that out at the top. So you'd be moving to adopt a tentative millage rate of 8.0105 mils, which is 10% above the rollback rate of 7.2822 mils, and adopting a tentative voted debt service levy of 3.3642 mils. And that information is at the top of page four of your report.
Or top page four.
Two separate?
That can be done in one motion. Your next motion will be to adopt your tentative budgets.
Say what he said.
Can we just say so? No, we can do that one. I'll, I'll try, I'll take a stab at the first one. Okay. I move to tentatively set the operating millage rate at 8.0105, which is 10% above the rollback rate, as well as the voted debt service rate of .3642.
Well, correct. The rollback rate is 7.2822 mils. So your motion was to set the tentative operating millage rate at 8.0105 mils, which is 10% above the revenue neutral rollback rate of 7.2822 mils.
You're making me see the whole thing?
Yes.
Oh, my gosh, okay. Okay. And then the voted debt service levy of .3642 mils, which is a reduction of .0437 mils and 38, .58% below the maximum levy authorized by Series 2005 General Obligation Bonds of .5930 mils.
That's it.
You got it. I have a motion, thank you very much. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Let's do this by roll call.
Member Diesel?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Behringer?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Is there any other action that is needed to be?
Yes. Now you need to adopt the tentative budgets, which would be a motion to tentatively adopt the general and related fund budgets, enterprise fund, capital improvement program and related budgets, as was presented in ordinances 41, 42, and 43, 2018.
Who would like to make that motion? Just say what he said. Just say, yeah.
I would make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not hearing any roll call vote, please.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Behringer?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Diesel?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else to be done this evening?
Yes, sir. As a reminder, the final public hearing will be on September 13th, 2018, at 5:30 PM in Council's chambers.
One thing else I would ask you, as the additional items that were presented tonight that we haven't discussed by Mr. Severs, could you go over those and maybe at the next meeting, we can discuss those individual things?
Do you, would you like a further discussion on OPEB? I think we did that one.
Yeah, yeah, we did that one. No, I'm talking about, there was, there was a lot of.
So I, Dwight, I think you spoke with Sean today and are you satisfied with? Okay, thanks, sir.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I think we have completed our mission this evening. So with that, I'll call this mission adjourned, this meeting adjourned.